This conference will now be recorded.
We're recording.
Okay, we're recording?
Yeah.
You're on?
Yeah.
I got six o'clock.
Yep. Charlie and Steve. Steve, Charlie. You guys turn your microphones on.
Steve, don't forget to cut them off. You ready? We'll break this party up.
I'm ready when you are.
All right, we're gonna do it. All righty. Good evening, everybody. So glad to see everybody here. Thanks for being here. So we're gonna get this meeting officially started. If you would, please rise and remain standing, sir. We shall start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so strong.
Commissioner Watt, would you mind doing the invocation for us there?
Heavenly Father, as we remember last week, the men and women of D-Day, we are reminded that freedom is not free. Lord, we want to thank you for the many blessings that you have given us, to which we're able to meet as a local government. Lord, I ask that you watch over this town and continue to bless us with your blessings. I'd like for you to watch over this board tonight and ensure we make the decisions that we need to. Lord, I ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
If you will, we may say, hey, we just have a moment of silence for our neighbor to pass away. All right, thank you. Maybe seated, if you would, please check your cell phones. Make sure you got them on. Be silent. And at this time, I'll ask anybody on the board, if they have anything that is a conflict of interest or anything that's on the agenda, please let it go down. If not, we will proceed. Is the adoption of the agenda as it is? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All right, next up is the introduction of new police officers. Chief, you wanna handle that?
Sir, how are y'all tonight?
Doing well.
All right, so I'm gonna introduce the first police officer over there is Officer Jose Peralta. Officer Peralta is originally from Brooklyn, New York. He has one year of full-time municipal law enforcement experience. Peralta served six years in the United States Marine Corps as a tanker, with last rank of sergeant slash tank commander. He's fluent in Spanish. He will be assigned to our patrol division as a full-time police officer. The other officer over there is Officer Matthew Wilkie. Matthew Wilkie was born and raised in Connecticut. He joined the United States Coast Guard at the age of 18 and served a total of 13 years in the Coast Guard. He was assigned to maritime law enforcement, conducted law enforcement boarding operations in southern United States, the west coast, and the middle east. He's also employed as a firefighter EMT with Broad and Gales Creek Fire Department. Officer Wilkie will be working as a part-time police officer with the town of Cape Carteret.
Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you. Next up is public comment. If you have anybody signed up to speak? I think there's like five of them up there. Old generic.
No, no generic.
Okay, all righty. Moving on then. Next up is the planning board report. Mrs. Truax, I believe you're going to grace us today.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to update you on the planning board minutes and I hope that the Commissioners had the opportunity to look at them. We worked on the rezoning request at Lakeside condo owners on 117 to 121 on Taylor Notion Road. We did a rezoning request for McLean Investment LP on 400 Taylor Notion Road. And we also have done the ordinance amendment updates on the established electric utility setback requirements. Mr. Rush, would you like to say anything on that to help help me out on that one?
Yeah, so the board will consider an ordinance tonight that the planning board recommended. It essentially requires new fences to be located 10 feet or more from overhead electric power lines. But we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that here later on in the agenda.
And our next board meeting is June 18th. We had the town staff made some comments approving the common parking lot in the townhouse projects. We also talked about the town center and the Bog Sound Drive rezoning. That's gonna be before the commissioning board this evening. And we have a gas line issue over at Country Club Point that we're looking at. If there are any questions from the commissioning board on what we have discussed. And like I said, are y'all getting a copy of the minutes from the planning board for your review? Okay. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for the update.
Mr. Mayor, before you get into any items that you have to vote on, I think it'd be appropriate to have a motion to excuse Mr. Ritchie from tonight's meeting, just so it's clear that his vote's not counted as affirmative.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you need a motion to...
Just excuse him from tonight's meeting.
Yeah, a motion to excuse Commissioner Ritchie.
I'll make a motion to excuse him.
A second.
All in favor? He is excused. Officially excused. Was I officially excused last week or scures?
You don't vote.
Oh. Okay, that's all right. All right, next up, let's see. We have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion approved?
I'll make that motion.
All right, second. I'll second. All right, all in favor? Next up is the ordinance resuming the west side of Bog Sound Drive from R-30 to R-10.
Mayor Baker, Commissioners, this is the same item that the board tabled at your meeting in May. The board did conduct a public hearing on this issue at the May meeting, but was not prepared to take action on the rezoning at that meeting in May. So it's presented again for your consideration here tonight. To recap briefly, the proposed rezoning is for 18 parcels located on the west side of Bog Sound Drive, as shown on the map at the front of the room. Those 18 parcels, 11 of those parcels are currently developed with single-family homes. Seven of those are currently vacant. The planning board discussed this issue at two of its meetings earlier this year and recommended that it be rezoned to R-10, which is the green, which is the rest of the Bay Shore Park neighborhood. It is currently zoned R-30, which is the yellow. That is our most stringent residential zoning district. The planning board felt that the development, the existing development in this area of Bog Sound Drive was more consistent with the R-10 areas in the rest of the Bay Shore Park neighborhood. There was some discussion at the last meeting about existing development rights under the R-30 zoning district versus what would be allowed in the R-10 zoning district. So the first thing, just to be clear, the zoning districts are pretty similar. They have similar setbacks, similar requirements in general. The biggest difference is between R-10 and R-30 is that in the R-30 zone, mobile homes are not permitted. They are permitted in the R-10 zoning. So that's something that would be a new use that would be permitted. Also, marinas are permitted in the R-10 zone, but not in the R-30 zone. And there is one small sliver of waterfront down here at the southern end of the proposed rezoning area, at the far south end indicated on the map there. There are some other slight differences in the setbacks. One thing to point out that I want to make clear, all of the existing vacant lots in this area may currently be developed with a single-family home. So that portion would not change, whether that's zoned R-30 or whether it's zoned R-10. Those seven lots could be developed, provided that the applicant meets the applicable setbacks and septic requirements and so forth going forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The board did hear a lot of public comment at your last meeting and look forward to helping you work through this issue.
Mayor Baker, I'd like to put a motion to table to table this agenda item indefinitely.
Mayor Baker, the town clerk is indicating that someone had signed up to speak about this issue tonight. There is no formal public hearing at tonight's meeting. It's completely at your discretion whether or not you want to entertain any additional public comment, notwithstanding whatever motions were just made, so.
Well, a motion's already been made, so... Is there a second for Commissioner Martin's motion?
I'll second that. Yeah, and I'll just say too, you know, I'm not saying that something probably doesn't need to be done here. I just don't, I don't know that this is the way to do it. I think there might be some other ways that we can solve some of these problems. I mean, we heard a lot of people talk last time about some of the negative impacts that this could cause. And I kind of agree with the motion, so.
You have a discussion? All right then, we'll put it to that. All in favor? All opposed? All right, thank you. All right, next up is the ordinance demanding unified development ordinance to establish the town center zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. We got into a lengthy explanation of the proposed town center zoning district at your meeting in May. At your direction, it was tabled. It's been placed back on the agenda for further discussion and consideration this evening. The board did conduct the formal public hearing at your meeting in May. Certainly, it's up to the board whether or not you want to entertain additional public comment on this. Just very briefly, the only comment, I guess I'd like to reiterate, is that this is a big decision for the town. This is very different than anything that has been in place in the town's unified development ordinance in the past. I think it's very exciting and potentially very beneficial for the town in the long term. But I want to make sure that you all are comfortable with it, that you get it right. So I encourage you to take as long as you'd like to review this, ask whatever questions you think are pertinent, and certainly make any adjustments or tweaks that you think are necessary going forward. With that, unless you'd like me to dive into some of the finer details, I think I'll just stop here and leave it open to your questions and look forward to your discussion and happy to help any way I can.
Well, I feel like we still have some fine tuning that we need to do with the UDO. So I'm for tabling this today until we get some of things taken care of in the UDO. It's just my opinion on it.
Yeah, I agree. We heard a lot last time about, you know, some of the things that we might not have included in the ordinance as it was proposed. I think, I think just in that one alone, I had like a page of notes. You know, this is big. This is very big. This is probably one of the biggest things we've had in this town. I think it's important that, that all Commissioners be here. I would actually like to table this one. But I think, I think we can put a... Because there is a lot to go through in on this, and I think we want to discuss that and be better prepared so that we're, we're addressing all the issues that people brought up last time. I would like to actually table this one for 60 days. I'd like to just come back in August. I'd like to have an opportunity for us to all work through some of the things that maybe needed to be added or subtracted. But that'll give us enough time to come back with a proposed ordinance and discuss it in public at that time. And then hopefully, we can, we can vote on it then. So my motion on the floor is gonna be to table this for 60 days.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
We'll bring it back in August then. And what I would say is, along the way, whether that's as a matter of your comments here tonight or at your July meeting, or whether that's just individual comments, please share with me what your thoughts and ideas are on this so that hopefully we can address those concerns, get your questions answered, and hopefully have a more productive discussion in August. So we'll plan on August.
Next up is the ordinance resuming the 400 Taylor Notion Road from B-10 to B-20. Thank you. I'm sorry. No, you go ahead.
The parcel in question is the green parcel on the screen. It's located at the intersection of Taylor and Notion Road and Highway 24. It's on the northeastern side of that intersection. It's a 3.1 acre parcel. It is currently zoned B-10. It is owned by McLean Investments. The property adjacent to it, in the yellow, is zoned R-30. So you see, we have a couple of single-family lots directly adjacent to it. The parcel to the northeast is zoned, it's actually not part of the town limits. It's in the ETJ. ETJ stands for extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's not part of the town, but it is subject to town development regulations. That is zoned R-10M. That's one of the few parcels in town that allows multifamily townhome developments. The parcel to the east is where the Culligan facility is. It's zoned B-30. That's our only parcel in town zoned B-30. The red is zoned B-20. That's the main commercial zoning that we have in Cape Carteret. Includes everything in the main shopping center and Lowe's Home Improvement, et cetera. The parcel in question is zoned B-10. And so B-10 is titled Business and Professional Offices. B-20 is what's proposed. So the applicant has requested that it switch from green to red, from B-10 to B-20. That allows retail sales and shopping center. And as I mentioned, that's the bulk of all the commercial properties in Cape Carteret. And I won't go through the list of all of the permitted uses in B-20. There's a list of that in your packet. But it includes all of the typical commercial uses that you see, primarily retail shopping, shopping centers, restaurants, Mac Daddies, things of that nature. There is a copy of the entire zoning map in your packet to show that area. There are only a few parcels in the entire town that are zoned B-10. The green, this is one of those. The applicant would like to make the parcel available for retail sales in the future. The applicant's currently entertaining a proposal for a boutique clothing shop at that location. However, the board should note that if you approve the rezoning, any of the permitted uses that are listed in our UDO on the listing, including your packet, would be allowed either currently or at some point in the future. So that's something you should keep in mind. There is a public hearing required. We have advertised that. We've also notified all of the adjacent property owners, posted the appropriate signage and included the advertisement in the Carteret news time. So with that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions you may have, either before or after the public hearing.
I'll suggest we just go ahead and go on to the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
A motion to go into the public hearing.
A second.
All right, all in favor? All right, we are now in the public hearing. We had one person sign up to speak, Ms. Ginger Gold, if you would.
Good evening. I think I'm supposed to say 136 Pine Lake Road. Frank kind of said some of the things that I was gonna say just to remind us what we're talking about here. But, you know, I just want to say, I reviewed all your agenda for this meeting and all the reading assignments. And just want to say thank you for your diligence in reviewing all the information and thoughtfully considering your answers here. There's a pretty dramatic difference between B-10 and B-20. And I didn't realize that till I started looking at all these attachments. So B-10 zoning, you know, it's your basic office space, okay? Such as a dentist's office or doctor's office. Could be a church or emergency services, a museum or a library kind of thing. I find it all a bit strange for, at the beginning of a residential street, you know, that it would be zoned B-10 in the first place anyway. But that's neither here nor there. So B-20 zoning allows for the same establishments as, as B-10, but with a lot more things. And I just want to bring to your attention, and you've probably already reviewed these, but for example, it could be a bakery. And that would smell pretty good in the neighborhood. Or how about a bank? And that would, that'd be kind of, kind of convenient. But then you could have a hotel, okay? That may not be too great for the beginning part of a neighborhood. Or a restaurant, by the way, like a Chick-fil-A. Pretty popular these days. And have you ever seen the traffic that that place generates? It's amazing. And Star Hill residents would love to maneuver in and out of, out of there. How about a pool hall? Yep, that's on the list. And of course, they'd serve alcoholic beverages, as well as possibly a sports bar, all right? Open to 3:00 AM? Wouldn't that be lovely? And since there's not much nightlife, you know, in Cape Carteret, how about a nightclub, you know, for the 30-something crowd that needs something to do, they need to hang out? So all this, all to say, that all these establishments are allowed in the B-20 zoning. And that's critical to consider. You know, the issue's this, and Frank's really already said it. Once you approve of zoning change, you will not be able to control what B-20 retail operations go on in this property. And though it might start out great with a little boutique or a this or a that, that sounds really nice. You don't know what the future would hold and so forth and so on. And so why upset the apple cart, right? When it's not necessary? And more importantly, it is not in the best interest of the people living on this street or the neighborhood at large. And one more comment. It really befuddles me why 400 Star Hill Drive is zoned as a business when across the street from it is a house and next to it is a lot zoned, as Frank said, R-30. Maybe you should consider going on in a more consistent manner to what currently exists around this three acre and zoned at R-30, but that's neither here nor less. So bottom line, definitely against rezoning 400 Star Hill Drive to B-20. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I believe that's all we had that signed to speak. You knew that.
I know.
No, no, go ahead and say something. To the microphone, please, ma'am.
Paxton Holtz, 547 Neptune Drive. Since you mentioned it, I am the owner of the ETJ property that's zoned multifamily. And I am very much in favor of the rezoning of this property to B-20. When I first came to work here in 1969, I worked out of that little yellow office right there. And then later, we moved our office to Star Hill, where I worked also. Now, that little yellow office, which we call it, has been a barber shop, a beauty shop, which sold retail goods. It would be consistent with the red zoning, which you can see all around it and even eastward down Highway 24, right next to residential property. And yes, a boutique is planned to go in there, which I'll be very glad of, since I'm still wearing my husband's and my son's old shirts. I would be glad of a ladies boutique in Cape Carteret so that I could buy a new blouse now and then. But I do not consider this would be detrimental to my property. My sister is here. She can speak or not. She owns the property immediately to the north zoned R-30.
It would be great.
And she says it would be great. But I don't think there's any cause for alarm or panic about the rezoning of this property. Unfortunately, my nephew could not be here. He had to postpone a trip to escort his daughter driving to Montana for her new job and her new life following graduation from East Carolina because his wife was in the hospital having surgery and he couldn't be back for this meeting. So I'm, in a way, speaking for him. As an adjacent property owner zoned residential, I am not opposed to this. I'm in favor of it. And I think it should be rezoned. It's kind of weird that it was ever, that it was ever zoned green in the first place. B-20 is much more consistent with the other property in the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, entertain a motion to go out of the public hearing and back into the regular session. I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor? All right, now we are back in regular session. Any questions for Frank, regarding this?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the, or to rezone, or to the motion, or, uh, rezone this parcel to B-20.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor? Next up is the ordinance resuming 117 to 121 Taylor Notion Road from R-30 to R-10.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the proposal for your consideration is a .89 acre parcel located between 117 and 121 Taylor Notion Road. It's indicated on the map here where the red arrow is pointing. It's an existing four-unit townhome complex that was constructed in 1975. It is currently zoned R-30. It is directly adjacent to the R-10M parcel, where the board approved new townhomes, 12 new townhome units at your meeting recently. Their request is to rezone to R-10M. Also, all of the surrounding properties are zoned R-30. It's primarily the Star Hill Golf Course. There's a vacant parcel directly to the north. Across the street, it's the U.S. Forest Service parcel. The applicants are here this evening. They have requested the rezoning, I think, to bring the current developed properties into compliance with the town's UDO. As we've discussed a few times in recent months, we have a few other R-10M properties in town. One is the property directly adjacent to this. There's the other one that I just showed on the previous map, down near Taylor and Notion Road and Highway 24. And then there's a parcel that's located at the terminus of Live Oak Drive. So this would be the fourth parcel zoned R-10M. Again, it is already used for multifamily housing, four units. And happy to answer any questions you may have. We have scheduled a public hearing for tonight. We've notified all the adjacent property owners. Encourage you to conduct that hearing this evening.
All right, I'll suggest again, we just go ahead and make a motion to go into public hearing. Second?
Same.
All in favor? All righty, we're now in public hearing. We have... Anybody signed up? Did you sign up online or...? Okay, well, go ahead and speak. This one? Okay, well, go ahead, Ms. Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor. Still live at 547 Neptune? As the trustee for my father's residuary trust, I am the adjacent property owner to this. Need to make one little correction, Frank. These condos were built in 1973 by the owners of Star Hill prior to the adoption of any zoning in Cape Carteret. And I've always worried about them because who wants to be a non-conforming use in case your house burns down? So I support this rezoning. I think it's entirely fair to the owners who have, over the years, owned these condominiums. And since the property next to them is zoned multifamily and the property next to them has no objection and encourages this rezoning, I urge you to comply with this. And then they'll all be the same. And they won't have to worry. If it burns down, they can build it back. Thank you.
And that's all we have for public comment?
On the review with the planning board, all the homeowners that own that land around there signed paperwork saying they approve of rezoning it. And that's what they would like to have done. So just wanted to let that be known, that everybody did get contacted and did approve it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that will entertain no motion to go out of the public comment hearing and back into the regular session.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor? All right, we are back in regular session. Any questions for Frank regarding this issue?
No, I just want to say that, uh, very rarely, since I've been on this board, has the, uh, the built-on structure actually match what they're actually applying for the zoning for. So that's kind of a first time for me on this board. Um, so I support this. I kinda, to be honest with you, thought it was already R-10 anyway. Uh, I think we've all treated it that way for some time. So, uh, I support this. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, rezone 117 to 121 Taylor Notion Road from R-30 to R-10M.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Next up is ordinance amendment, unified development ordinance to clarify electric utility setback requirements.
The, uh, the map on the screen, I admittedly is a little bit difficult to read. Hopefully, it's a little clearer for the board, uh, in your agenda packets. But the, the map that's presented in front of you is a map of Old Cape Carteret. Um, and over here is Highway 58 and then the various streets in Old Cape Carteret all the way over to Deer Creek in this part of the, of the map. Uh, what it shows, it's a map prepared by Carteret Craven Electric Cooperative. Uh, it illustrates the, uh, location of overhead electric utility lines in the Old Cape Carteret neighborhood. And as you, uh, could see on the map and as I've seen in the neighborhood, there are several overhead electric utility lines that are located behind the homes in Old Cape Carteret. Uh, some are also in the side yards. There are occasionally some out on the street right away, which is the more typical alignment. Uh, but there are quite a few that are behind the homes or in the side yard of the homes. The, the town of Cape Carteret, um, the UDO currently includes a requirement that fences may not be constructed in an easement area in the property. And that requirement's been in place for many, many years. Um, and practically speaking, it affects fences, uh, more than anything else because any structure that might be constructed is going to be subject to the required rear and side yard setbacks. Fences are typically built on the property line. So the town's ordinance currently includes a provision that essentially says you can't construct a fence within the utility easement. Um, that's led to some confusion and some conflict, uh, at different times. And so the town staff brought forth a proposal to the planning board to simplify that and clarify that. So the ordinance amendment that you have in your packet, uh, that was recommended by the planning board, uh, it simply says that if there's an overhead electric utility line in the rear yard or the side yard, the fence has to be located at least 10 feet away from that line. And so again, that is a current requirement. Uh, it's just stated a little more clearly, uh, in this ordinance amendment presented for your consideration tonight. Uh, when the planning board discussed this, discussed this at their meeting in May, um, they were concerned with the fact that there are existing, uh, several fences that are not consistent with this requirement. And I don't know how those fences came to be. I don't know if they were erected prior to this ordinance being in effect. Uh, I don't know if the property owner simply didn't apply for a permit and got away with it, uh, or perhaps the town staff erroneously approved it. And the practical, uh, result is that it probably doesn't matter. Those fences are there currently. This ordinance would not require those existing fences to come down. However, the planning board was concerned about this and included a provision that basically says if that non-compliant fence, uh, if that property is subject to a new commercial permit, I'm sorry, a new zoning permit, um, the fence would need to come into compliance. So in other words, if someone was putting an addition on their home, if they were building a garage, if they were building a new deck, really anything that requires a zoning permit, if the fence is out of compliance, they would need to move the fence back at least 10 feet away from the electric utility line. Um, so that's the, the, really the key substance of the issue. Uh, as you have probably seen in the neighborhood, there are many, uh, properties whose fences have complied with this. It's a real mixture of homes that put their fence 10 foot back and then there are others that are in the way of the, of the 10-foot area. The rationale for the ordinance, again, which has been in place for many years, uh, is to keep that easement area open in case power lines come down, power goes out, to enable Carteret Craven Electric Cooperative to go in quickly, efficiently, um, safely, uh, repair the electric service, restore electric service, which certainly everyone would want that to occur as quickly as possible, particularly after a hurricane. So the intent is to clarify that, simplify it. Uh, we have scheduled and advertised a public hearing for tonight. So I encourage you to conduct that public hearing tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, we'll just go on a roll and, uh, one of you guys would like to do a motion for the public hearing. We'll go ahead and do that.
I'll make that motion.
All right, second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, and I'm looking at the right one. Is this all, is this all the awards?
One word, nothing else.
Nothing on it, okay. Somebody sign to speak. Okay, all righty. With that, I will entertain a motion to go out of the public hearing and back into the regular session.
I'll make that motion as well.
Okay, second. That's a tie for second. All in favor? All right, we're back in the regular session. Any questions for Frank?
I got a question. So what about like service poles that are in like people's backyards? Particularly, there's one lot over there on Yopon, it's like a really large lot. The very first one, across from the Presbyterian Church.
Okay, yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Is, will it affect her or that family?
Yeah, so the, the planning board discussed this and specifically, this ordinance would not apply to a service pole for an individual property. It's only for the main electric utility lines that run, the transmission lines that run behind or on the side of the property. So if it's an individual service pole, it would not be subject to this requirement. And is not currently subject to this requirement.
Are blue lines on this map, they're not like, is blue line a utility with an easement or?
Yeah, so the, the difference in the colors is really, um, different performance specifications for the electric utility lines. There's no significance to it in terms of the UDO. It's a Carteret Craven map and it delineates different types of electric lines and, and voltages running through the neighborhood.
And are all of the easements 20-foot wide?
Um, we believe that most of them are 20-foot wide. There may be some that are slightly larger, um, could be 30 feet wide.
My concern is that currently it says we gotta stay out of the easement. And I understand that we're trying to make enforcement easier, but I certainly don't want to, ordinance on our books that people will start to believe is okay and the power company come and cut 10 foot of somebody's fence off because the easement's bigger there than, and they'll have every right to do it.
Yeah. Yes, I, I, I think that's a reasonable concern. Um, in reality, what happens currently with the fences that are in the way, uh, that are existing in the easement area, the power company will ultimately come in and remove that fence if they need to reach that power pole or that power line and take it down. We went with the 10-foot because it was easy to communicate. Um, a lot of people probably don't even know they have the easement in their yard. A lot of people probably don't even know we have this requirement. So instead of referring someone to keep it 10-foot off an easement, we thought it would be simpler just to say, keep it 10-foot away from the power line. The, the power company is comfortable with the 10-foot requirement, but there may be some examples where there's a slightly larger easement. Most of them are 20 feet, 10-foot on either side.
Right. If it's the higher transmission lines, like on 24, I think they've got a 30-foot for that. And as you go up, it gets larger.
Yeah, and, and so this wouldn't apply to anything like the massive lines out on Highway 58 or on Highway 24. It's the individual neighborhood service lines that are running through the backs, backyards and side yards.
I'm just wondering, should we have some language in there to let's say there is a, an incident to where the power company, there's several options I could show you down here. And they have to go in and remove that fence that, that they're not and the town's not held liable for putting that fence back or, or compensating them for that because it was put in the right of way. I don't know if that's, if that language is, would be good or to add?
I, I, I think we certainly can add that if you'd be more comfortable with something like that. I'll let the town attorney speak to that. But, um, in reality, what has happened in the past is if they have to move it, they go in and they move it. Um, some of the anecdotal stories that I've heard, um, I, they have indicated that the power company's been very kind and gracious to those property owners and has provided compensation, put it back and hopefully put it back in the right location, like if you want to add anything.
I would say it's, it's a lot like, I think your concern's certainly valid. It's, it's a lot like having restricted covenants in the neighborhood, right? Just because the zoning allows you to do something does not necessarily mean the homeowner can do it. That would be similar in this case where, from a zoning perspective, you need to be at least 10 feet out. But if there's a prior easement, then that property owner should know about that easement and they would need to stay out of that or they're taking a risk. So from a liability perspective, I don't think we have a problem. But certainly from a public image standpoint, which I think is what you're referring to, if, if that's something you want to put in the ordinance where you can just put a note in there that, you know, please note that just, but by adhering to this does not necessarily mean you're complying with the easement of the power company. That's certainly something we can add just as a disclaimer.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Well, I think it's a safety concern, especially since we have a lot of hurricanes come through here. If you've been here, we've had some doozies. I, I'm for it, but I'd like to add the verbiage that you're talking earlier about. And so we'll look, we don't look like, where, how would you like that?
I mean, the truth is that personally, I don't really care. If you want to take the risk and it's your property, go ahead. However, if we're gonna have an ordinance that says we've got to stay off the right of way and we have to enforce that ordinance, it sure bells to have a measure of number to apply that because I'm sure, I, I haven't looked at the class one. I'm sure they're not on everybody's flat.
So, I mean, can we table it and come back to it when we get the verbiage?
If that's the board's will, we certainly can.
Okay, I'd like to table it, back to it next month.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to table it.
Okay.
For next meeting.
All right, I have a second. I'll second. Okay, all in favor for table? All right, we'll bring it back up next. All right, next up is resolution authorizing the sale of 100 Taylor Notion Road via the upset bid process.
On the map, uh, before you this evening, uh, is the property that is owned by the town uh, at the tip of Taylor Notion Road and Highway 58. Uh, it's a 1.1 acre parcel, uh, that the town purchased in December of 2023. Uh, we purchased it for $125,000. We incurred approximately an additional $10,000 of legal expenses associated with the title search on the property. Uh, so the town's total investment's about $135,000 in the parcel. Um, it is a currently vacant parcel. Uh, it does have a couple of existing, uh, advertising signs located at the northern tip of that parcel. Um, those are subject to a sign area easement, uh, that was put into place when the town acquired the property in December of 2023. Uh, that is roughly the northern 100-foot portion, kind of the tip of the triangle, so to speak. Um, it equates to about .15 acre. So there's a, a sign area easement on there. Essentially, what that allows is, uh, if at such, such time in the future that DOT may require those signs to be relocated as part of a highway project and the town's ordinance is permitted, those signs that are existing could be relocated anywhere within that upper 100-foot area. Um, what you see on the diagram at the bottom is a sliver that is 65 feet wide, the southern 65-foot wide segment right here. Uh, that is planned for the location of the new multi-use path, uh, which we will be soliciting construction bids for here in the next couple of weeks. Um, that, that easement does not currently exist, but that would be retained by the town uh, if the town does convey the property, uh, if the board authorizes the sale and we convey the property. That's about a quarter of an acre. What's left in between in the yellow area here, uh, is about seven tenths of an acre. Um, that is the portion of the land that is available for development and any individual who might purchase this property, that's the portion they would essentially have the right to use. Still a pretty good-sized piece of property, almost three quarters of an acre. Um, the town, when it purchased the property, uh, we purchased it, uh, specifically to run the bike path through this southern portion of the property. Um, as you can see, if we did not own this property, we'd have to stay along the right of way and go all the way up to the tip of the triangle and all the way back down Highway 58. That's roughly almost an additional 800 linear feet that we won't have to construct, um, because the town purchased the property. And the purchase of the property wound up saving the town probably close to $200,000 in path construction expenses. Um, there are some pretty significant drainage features, uh, in the DOT right of way, um, up at the northern tip up there that were going to be expensive for the town to relocate. So, uh, that was the rationale for the town buying it and the use of the property is solely at the board's discretion. Uh, we talked a couple of times in recent months and the board, um, authorized me to solicit, uh, offers for the sale of this property. We have received an offer. Uh, we've received an offer, uh, from a gentleman named Gary Penny. Uh, he has offered $80,000 for the property. He would acquire the entire 1.1 acre parcel. However, the sign area easement and the bicycle path easement would remain. And so he essentially, for all practical purposes, couldn't use those portions of the property. Um, under North Carolina general statutes, uh, one of the common ways that a municipality, uh, sells property is something called the upset bid process. Uh, essentially, that's the process we are recommending for your consideration tonight. If the board accepts the offer from Mr. Penny for $80,000, uh, we would then place an advertisement in the Carteret News Times. That advertisement has to run for, uh, at least 10 days. Uh, just given the way that the, the schedule works for the Carteret News Times, the soonest that that ad could be, uh, in the paper is just coming Sunday. So if the board approves the sale, we would advertise, uh, the potential sale at a cost, at a price of $80,000. Uh, that ad would run for 10 days. And if during that 10-day period, the town receives a higher bid, uh, that would become the active bid, active high bid. The statutes do require essentially that the bid be increased by at least 5%. Um, so we'd be, there's a little bit of a nuance in there, but essentially if someone wanted to offer a higher price, they'd have to offer $84,050. If we receive a higher bid, uh, we would simply take that bid and go through the process all over again. We'd advertise for another 10 days and someone could submit another higher bid. It has to be at least 5% and a little, some change in there and just keep going through the process. That process ends when we don't receive any other bids. So if we go, if the board approves the resolution tonight and accepts the offer, we'll run the advertisement. If we don't receive any additional bids, the property would be sold to Mr. Penny at the $80,000 figure. If we receive a higher bid, we'll continue with that process and then ultimately, whatever the highest bid is, that will come back to the board for your consideration, um, prior to completing the sale with that individual. So, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. There's lots of information included in the packet about it. Um, essentially, I think probably the, the simplest way to characterize this is if the board decides to sell the property, um, we will have essentially spent about $55,000 to secure a quarter-acre piece of land, which is the pathway, the southern 65 feet that the path would go through. So, um, that's the way I'm looking at the investment. Again, realizing that it saves the town probably close to $200,000 in construction expenses going forward. The town certainly would give up the right to develop that parcel for any future public use. Um, however, we would retain the area, the, the path itself, the purple line, is 10-foot wide. And so you're going to retain that area in between the curves of the path. So you'll have another roughly 50, 55 feet of width in there that I think would be, um, a good location, maybe for some trail amenities, maybe some benches, maybe some exercise equipment, um, landscaping, the memorials, whatever the board may have in mind. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. have in mind. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And town attorney has been involved in this process as well. He would handle the closing if and when we get to that point.
Well, not normally for this. But did you have a question? I mean, we're a small town. I mean, if you make it really quick.
My only question is, the zoning for that, for that 0.7 acre, is that limited to residential?
Yes, it has to, it has to fall under, if I, don't let me.
No, please, please do.
It has to fall under covenants of Star Hill. So it has to be everything that Star Hill, if they want to approve it in the golf course, they want to approve it there. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, so you did. It's limited to single-family residential. The property also could not be subdivided. So it would be one single-family home. There's a 40-foot setback from each of the roads. So if you see the blue rectangle in there, that's the approximate location where a house would be built. The purple triangle, the purple rectangle is the permitted septic area. It's got a four-bedroom septic permit.
All right, I'll do that. Any questions for Frank? Comments?
Yeah, I got a comment. I think it's very important to note once again that the town, if we do sell this property, is going to retain a 65-foot wide easement. That's quite a chunk of land. So that said, I want to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of 100 Taylor Notion Road via the upset bid process.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay. Next up is discussion of potential lease of additional land in the Manatee Street.
Mayor Baker, commissioners, I've included a graphic on the screen that shows the current Manatee Street boat ramp. The current ramp is in the reddish color in this area here. The town currently leases approximately 22,000 square feet of land from Manatee Investments. That lease has been in place since 2006. It is obviously the town's boat ramp facility, very popular with our residents and property owners and even those in nearby towns. The ramp itself is located right here, about in the middle of it. There's a grand total of about 30 parking spaces in this area in red. Manatee Investments recently approached the town about potentially leasing additional land that they own, which is the yellow area that you see in the graphic. It's just to the north of this parcel. It's actually all part of the same parcel, but that's an additional 32,000 square feet of land in yellow. The property has been offered to the town for lease for additional parking for the boat ramp facility. We would need to do some additional work to lay out the specific layout of any new parking spaces, but I feel confident we could get at least 30 and probably close to 40 parking spaces on that site if it was acquired for additional parking. There is an access driveway across an existing ditch up in the northwestern corner of the property. The soils are pretty stable. It's a mix of established grass and also some sandy areas, but very stable. And I think it would be very easy to park vehicles and trailers on that lot. I would submit to you that if we did make this available for additional parking, that we would probably want to install concrete parking bumpers and probably install some fencing in there to make sure that anybody that parks there does not move on to the adjacent vacant parcel. As I mentioned earlier, the offer is to lease it for $25,000 per year. The existing lease for the Manatee Street public boat ramp expires in actually 2026. However, there's an automatic five-year extension if the town exercises that. So for practical purposes, the lease ends in November of 2031. So we've got a little more than seven years left on that lease. If the board chose to lease this property, we would simply amend the existing lease to include both of those areas on the map and the annual payment would be approximately $42,000 per year. The 17 that we're currently paying plus the 25, we also pay for the taxes. Those are minimal each year on the property. And then there is an inflation adjustment built into the lease agreement. So if the board decided to pursue this, we would lease it for an additional roughly seven years at $25,000 per year. That's obviously an additional expense to the town. We do not currently, we certainly have the funds budgeted for the existing lease, the 17,000 plus. We don't have funds budgeted for this additional 25,000. If the town decided to lease this, we'd need to identify revenues to cover this lease. One scenario that you may want to think about is potentially selling additional boat ramp passes that could generate sufficient funds to cover the cost of the lease. We have different rates for different residents of the town and some of the nearby towns, but you'd basically need to sell roughly anywhere between another 50 to 100 passes, give or take, to generate the 25,000 necessary to cover this lease. There may be other options. You may allocate funds from the general fund. You may reduce something else, allocate the funds for this. You may decide to appropriate fund balance. So there's some different options available if the board would like to explore this further. You know, so ultimately, as you know, the facility is incredibly popular with our residents and property owners. Most days, you can find a parking space down there pretty easily, certainly on the busy holiday weekends and some of the busy summer and fall weekends. We get some overflow. You see some folks parked mostly out in the right of way on Manatee Street. There are some areas there that are no parking zones. There are others that are not, and that's typically where people will park. So this would provide some overflow parking for those busiest days, which I would guess that probably happens maybe 10, 20 days per year. And some of you that have more long-term history here may have a better sense of that than I. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have about it. Mrs. Holtz is here from Manatee Investments. I'm sure she'd be happy to entertain any questions from you. If it's something that you'd like to pursue, what I would like to do is spend a little bit more time just laying out the parking area and then bring you a lease amendment at your next meeting if it's something you'd like to pursue. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Frank?
I've got some comments, Mayor.
Okay, go right here.
Ask the board, bear with me, wrote down a few comments I want to make tonight. First off, we didn't engage in discussion about leasing this parking lot during the budget talks. Not sure why it was placed on the agenda tonight since it is on the agenda. I will give reasons I cannot support it if it is a future agenda item. I want to say, first of all, the ink's not even drawn on the budget that we approved a couple of weeks ago. This issue should have been discussed during the budget talks, but it wasn't due to little or no interest from the board at that time. Number two, the cap that we, that three of us commissioners placed on the number of boat ramp passes was not done because of parking issues or lack of parking, but because of too much pressure on a single ramp. Okay. The lease of the boat ramp expires in 2031, leaving us in a huge budget revenue shortfall. We've been advised by the town manager that we should prepare immediately for that. So why are we discussing this knowing we are losing the ramp in 2031? Why should we spend more money on it? Leasing the parking lot will require maintenance and costs not discussed. I envision ruts and general destruction of the property that the owner would hold town accountable to repair. Public works is stretched thin now. They don't need another burden placed on their shoulders. A single ramp will not accommodate more use. The one we have in Bayshore, I think we're around 100 people. We capped this one at 285. That's almost three times a little single ramp. The time is here for us to start planning for the loss of revenue from boat ramp. Leasing this property will make it harder to do that. As I mentioned, this should have been discussed during budget talks, not three weeks after we adopted the budget. The current parking lot has been sufficient ever since we've leased that boat ramp, except for a couple of holidays, whatever was before and before we capped the amount of passes. And that's, that's all I've got to say about this issue.
Yeah, I'd like to say, first of all, you know, thank you to Manatee Investments for offering the town the opportunity. However, you know, I use that ramp and it, the issue is it being a one-stall, you know, boat ramp. You can't change at 4 o'clock, 4:30, when everybody's coming back, the congestion that is there. And while I think, you know, well, I just don't think that, that parking is going to solve that problem, or more parking is going to solve that problem. In fact, I think it might be counter to what we, this board has tried to do by limiting passes, maybe even increasing pricing to try to minimize some of that congestion. So I don't think I support this for that reason. I think I just don't support this for that. Yeah, but thank you. I really do appreciate it. I just, I don't think it's going to work.
I'm not for selling my boat passes either.
I don't think I have anybody who's going to make a motion on this one.
Well, do we need a motion? This was just.
We're only in discussion tonight.
That's right. Yeah. So I'm, obviously I'm not sensing any interest from the board in this, so I will not pursue this then going further.
All right, next up is the town manager report.
Several things in writing, just a couple of brief things. The first summer concert is Wednesday night, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. The Dust Parade will also have a food truck. What's Jay cooking out there? Hope the folks will be able to come out and enjoy that. I looked at the forecast earlier today. It looks like it should be a nice evening. So we have an open house tomorrow, right here in this room, about the Western Carteret Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. That starts at 5 o'clock tomorrow night. It goes till 6:30. It's a drop-in event. So folks are encouraged to come to that if they're interested in future bicycle and pedestrian amenities. Along the lines of boat ramp passes, we are sold out now. So there will be no more issued until 2025. We'll put those on sale in November. And then finally, I touched on it a little bit earlier. I am scheduled to meet with several contractors individually later this week and earlier next week to tour the route of the new Cape Carteret Trail segment and solicit bids for that. So I hope I can bring you construction contract recommendation, perhaps in July, maybe the August meeting and get that constructed and finished. So really looking forward to that. Happy to answer any questions you might have about anything else in the packet or really anything that's on your mind regarding the town.
I got a question about relocating that, the floating dock.
Yeah.
So is that something, so like right now, is it over at Bedford Creek?
Yeah.
It's kind of in the same harbor area.
So at the.
If we move it over here when there's hurricanes, is that something that's got to be removed?
Yeah, I think it would probably depend on the predicted intensity of the hurricane. We may very well want to remove it temporarily during a storm because it's going to get more wave action over there. So at the current kayak facility, you know, there's two different little cuts of water that come up in there. This is the portion that's furthest out, not the actual facility where you slide the kayak down. It's the location further out, closer to the homes in Star Hill. It's just a floating dock that doesn't appear to get much use. So the intent was to move it to Ferry Landing Park so that folks could enjoy it there, maybe get down to the water a little bit more. I've had some conversations in particular with Commissioner Martin about maybe trying to do a small dock feature of some kind at Ferry Landing Park in the future, and we probably can make that happen. But that was the idea behind that.
Frank, has there been any progress made by the two owners of Golf and Dolphin Drive to fix the potholes?
So I included in your packet a quote that I got for $267,000, which was very significant. And I don't think would be supported by anyone, the two owners or the town. I have included in there a sketch of a revised scope of work. And I'm scheduled to meet with contractors later this week and early next week to talk about what that cost would be. My intent is if that cost is a reasonable number, to convene the two other property owners in that area and see if we can work out an arrangement where they can fund the majority of the costs, perhaps all the costs, but certainly the majority of the cost for that paving.
One more question, future public boat ramp options?
Yeah.
Which I foresee that being way down the road.
It is.
Certainly not pressing, but you, I see probably the most logical one would be, in my opinion, would be the Manatee. Why was it not listed?
So the, I met with the folks from KAMA. So first of all, what I would say is that according to the language in the documents that dedicated those street ends to the town, I think all of them could theoretically be used for public boat launching facilities. The language is such that it'd be permitted. It comes down to the KAMA permitting. And so I met with KAMA staff, probably, I don't know, a couple of months ago. And there are different factors that go into permitting that. Some of it, it's the depth of water. Some of it, it's the submerged aquatic vegetation in that area. Some of it's the marsh grass. And so based on the current conditions out there, they felt like the best locations were Ferry Landing Park, Bog Sound Drive, Anita Fort Drive Park, and maybe Benita Street, just based on the environmental characteristics there. But it's also important to note that sometimes those things change, right? As the, as the shoreline changes, as the depths of water change. So some of the others might become more viable in the future. But if we were trying to pursue them today, those were the ones we'd have the best chance of getting a permit for. They were essentially, for the most part, opposed to the other locations, including Manatee Street, because there's a lot of submerged aquatic vegetation just off from the street end. Certainly, it's fine where the boats are going in and out of the little cut there, but where our street end goes straight out, there's some environmental issues there that probably wouldn't be permitted.
Well, it's kind of strange that KAMA approved a dredging effort a couple of years ago in that area. And they declined us a kayak facility in Bayshore because of subaquatic grasses. But now they're saying it's okay. Did they visually look at every one of these spots?
Yeah, well, we went and we looked at all of the aerial photography that exists for each of the locations. And that was their preliminary read, because as you said, we're not going to do this now. But I was just trying to get a general sense from them, you know, is this even realistic? Legally, we can do it. And the town attorney and I have discussed it. It's going to come down to the permits. And so if this is something that the town wants to pursue in the future, we're going to have to secure the appropriate KAMA permits. Based on current conditions, these are the locations they think have the best chance.
Well, I guess another thing too, Bayshore has its own boat ramp. So there would be nobody from, say, Old Cape Carteret, come over there and launch a boat, then drive back over here and walk back to Bayshore. So.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, it.
And how old were those maps that you looked at or the aerial vision?
It was, it was 2024 aerial photography that we were looking at.
I'm just curious. It's just years down the road, I'm sure, but.
Yeah. So the reason for convening those discussions was really just trying to look at all the options because 2031 will be here before we know it. People in the community, I'm sure, that utilize the existing Manatee Street boat ramp or would like to have some alternative. So in my mind, if the board, either currently or in the future, supports this, it might be a way to meet some of the demand, right? Perhaps you could create some ramps in these neighborhoods. The nearby property owners could simply walk back or drive their truck and trailer back to their house, then walk on back and get in the boat and take off. It may be that you have an opportunity to buy a vacant lot that's located, three or four lots back from the water, or maybe you create on-street parking in some of these areas. So I just really want to have the town, give the town as many options as possible to consider going forward. Thankfully, we got seven years, but it'll be here before you know it.
Okay. Well, I didn't mean, I didn't want to waste a lot of time on that. Just.
I just wanted to make you aware of the opportunity that might exist.
Thanks, Frank.
Any more questions or comments for Frank? If not, then we'll move on to Commissioner. If not, then we'll move on to the commissioner reports, and we'll just let you keep talking, Steve, if you have.
Yeah, I just got one quick comment. And in hearing about the easements and whatnot, Frank, and I, and I did, I'll tell everyone, I did speak to Frank about this over telephone. I think public education, we need to educate the public as much as possible through our Facebook or Cape Connection about, like you, you said, most people don't even know they got a utility easement on their property. I know for a fact, because I've gotten several phone calls about this, this agenda item. They didn't know. So I would ask you to, to, to make an effort to educate the public, not only on this issue, but a lot of issues to save us all a lot of headaches.
Absolutely.
And you've got the perfect platform to do it with, with the Cape Connection letter. So I would urge you to do that. That's all I got. Thank you.
I don't have anything tonight.
Well, I'd like to thank MNE and the planning board for all they do to help steer the town in the right direction. And I do watch the planning board meetings, so I know you guys put in a lot of effort and valuable input in pretty well-thought-out strategies that you think would be good for the town's growth. So I'd just like to thank you, and then welcome Jose and Matthew, which they're not here.
They're gone.
And there you go. And the portable toilets down at the boat ramp, I'm getting good feedback on those, so they are being used. So I appreciate that. That's it.
I don't think I have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay. I did have a question for Ron. Are we going to get the sales up before Wednesday for the stage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have everything up in the mailroom for Wednesday afternoon.
All right, and just want to make sure everybody's aware, Hank Barbie and the Dust Parade, amazing band, amazing bands. We're very lucky to have them here. The weather looks great, so I'd invite everybody to come out for the concert. And other than that, I just want to thank all our staff, doing an awesome job. Police Department, just cannot say enough about how well this small town is ran. Well, then I'd entertain a motion to go into a closed session.
So moved.
And have pursuant to attorney client privilege.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Well, I think, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
This conference will now be recorded.